Hey, thank you everybody for coming to our March 27th Planning Commission. And we'll go ahead and start off with the flag salute, if everybody will follow me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, roll call.
Mr. Gray?
Here.
Mr. Nader?
Here.
Mr. Moss?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Rikuchi?
Here.
Mr. Denial?
Here.
Mr. Severson?
Okay, and we'll have our report from Planning Director, EJ.
Good morning. EJ Valdi with Planning Services Division here to give you the Planning Director's Report. I can report on a few items that your commission took action on that went on to the Board of Supervisors. At the February 25th meeting, the Board approved a zoning text amendment for the transitional and supportive housing. Then on March 11th, the Board approved a temporary sign ordinance that allows for the continued use of certain temporary signs that would otherwise be prohibited. And that's going to be in effect until January 15th of 2016. The Board also continued the appeal hearing for the Belcara subdivision. That was, that's appealed to an, or continued to an open date. And that was at the request of the applicant and staff. I believe the applicant wants to go back, you know, see, get together with their counsel and look at, you know, what the options are for that, for that project and how they will move forward. And I do need to talk about some upcoming Planning Commission meetings. The next regularly scheduled meeting is going to be April 24th. And we have four items on there right now. We're going to bring the community centers back as a kind of a final workshop. And we're also in the process of circulating the environmental document for that project, a negative declaration. And then we also have an appeal of the ZA decision. It's expo floors, it's a fence height, that's down in Granite Bay. There's a variance in another conditional use permit will also be on that agenda. And then two weeks later, we would like to meet on May 8th and bring the community centers back for a final action, or which would be a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors by your commission. And we will also have on that agenda the Sheridan Community Plan. And that will also be looking for a recommendation at that time. And then we'll hopefully give you a month break. And then in June, on June 12th, we would like to do a Tahoe meeting. And there's about six items right now that are floating around that may be on that, all Tahoe items. We have Squaw Valley Stables, Denny's Trailer Park, rafting permits, there's a couple of extensions of times, the big project, North Star Mountain Master Plan. I'm not sure if all of those are going to make that hearing, but since they're all in Tahoe, we would like to do that on June 12th. And that's, that's all I have. If you have any questions about dates or any other questions, I'd be happy to answer.
No?
Good. You guys are easy. Thank you.
Oh.
Well, just wanted to mention, welcome onboard, congratulations.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate that.
Yeah, and thank you for moving the Sheridan to the 8th because you were thinking about doing it on the 24th. And I'm not going to be, I'm not going to cheer for that meeting and along with these. Thank you.
Perfect. Okay, at this time, I'll open it up for public comment. If anybody from the public would like to comment on anything that is not on today's agenda, now is your chance. Seeing none, we'll go ahead to our 10:05 item, Camel's Hump Caretaker's Residence, Third Party Appeal and Zoning Administrator's Adoption of Modified, Mitigated Negative Declaration and Approval of Minor Use Permit. And Melanie, if you're also.
Thank you. The Development Review Committee brings forward for your consideration a third-party appeal of the zoning administrator's decision to approve a minor use permit that would allow for caretaker's residence to be located on an approximately 600-acre timber production zoning property. The property is timberland production and surrounding properties to the north are also timberland production. Further, other properties are zone farm and residential forest. The project is located in the Colfax area off of Yankee Jim's Road, which branches off of Gillisil, or excuse me, Gillisil Road, which branches off of Yankee Jim's Road. The property borders the North Fork of the American River, which is located to the east and the south of the property. The south and west of the property, lying on the opposite side of the American River Canyon, are properties that range in size from approximately 2.3 acres to seven acres and contain single family residences. The proposed caretaker's residence would be located on one of two building sites on the property. And the building sites would be up to two acres inside and all discernences resulting from the construction of the caretaker's residences and appurtenances would be limited to the selected building site. As stated, the purpose of the caretaker's residence would be to support a full-time caretaker on the property. The caretaker would oversee the implementation of a forest management plan that was prepared for the property. The minor use permit was approved by the zoning administrator on November 21st, 2013. The approval allows for a maximum of 1,800 square foot caretaker's residence and a 25 by 20-foot square foot garage. On December 2nd, 2013, an appeal was filed by Michael Garabedian on behalf of Friends of the North Fork of the zoning administrator's adoption of the mitigated negative declaration as modified and approval of the minor use permit for the caretaker's residence. The appellant asserts the following. The zoning administrator applied the wrong standards and the employee housing section of the Placer County zoning ordinance incorrectly. Staff's response, the zoning administrator applied the standards set forth in the caretaker employee housing section of the zoning ordinance and made the decision to approve the minor use permit based on the materials submitted by the applicants, including a forest management plan, an addendum to the forest management plan, and further discussions with the applicants and evidence of a USDA grant to support the reforestation of the property. In addition, property owners have actively carried out a number of the practices that were provided in the forest management plan. Number two, building locations would be incompatible with the California Constitution's tax exemptions, state law, TPZ zoning, the county general plan, and state forest conservation law, and would have an adverse impact on TPZ properties in the vicinity. Based on analysis of the project, staff determined that the goals put forth by the property owners and the forest management plan are consistent with the section of the California Constitution cited in the appeal. Number three, caretaker's residence requires a rezone. The purpose of the Timberland Production Zone District is to encourage prudent and responsible forest resource management and the continued use of timberlands for the protection of timber products and compatible uses. Staff determined that the caretaker's residence conforms to the standards put forth in the Timberland Production Zone District and the caretaker employee housing section of the zoning ordinance. Number four, building locations would be a major visual intrusion into the American River Canyon and the Auburn State Recreation Area. Based on the visual exhibits that are included on pages 111 and 112 of your staff report, the construction of the caretaker's residence does not have an impact on the American River Canyon to the east and to the south. All visual impacts are limited to the residences located at high elevations on the opposite side of the American River Canyon to the south and west. Based on this, staff determined that visual impacts resulting from the residents are less than significant. Number five, the applicant must apply for relief from standards that would restrict that would restrict the size of the residence to 1,200 square feet. The section of the zoning ordinance cited by the appellant for relief from standards is not applicable to minor use permits and is only applicable to administrative approvals. In addition to this, the project application was made prior to the Placer County Farm Worker Housing Ordinance, which would have limited it to 1,200 square feet. But for these reasons, staff determined that the prior standards should be applied to the minor use permit and the size of the residence should be determined by the zoning Number six, the caretaker's residence is not warranted because the forest management and logging around, should not be permitted on a 24-hour basis and because security is not necessary. Based on the applicant's materials, including the forest management plan and the addendum to the forest management plan, staff determined that a caretaker's residence on the property was warranted. Number seven, the Gillisil Fault Zone on the property site poses a risk to the caretaker's residence and should be avoided. The mitigated negative declaration addresses an earthquake fault zone that has been mapped on the property, in the approx, or excuse me, at the property location of the main ridge between the North Fork of the American River and Bunch Creek Smothers Ravine drainages. Gillisil crosses the property in its southeastern corner in the vicinity of Camel's Hump. The proposed building sites are not located on Camel's Hump or in the area where the fault may pose a risk. Number eight, one of the proposed building locations is located near an abandoned mine. The mitigated negative declaration discusses an abandoned mine that is located on the property. However, potential hazards related to the mine would be mitigated by the implementation of a mitigation measure that requires the project applicant to secure the opening of any mine tunnels on the property to prevent unauthorized access. Staff determined that the mine on the property is not a significant hazard to the caretaker. The caretaker's residence would create fire hazard risks to the property and surrounding properties. Mitigation measures are included in the environmental document that would reduce the fire hazard risks to levels compatible with the implementation of a caretaker's residence, including shaded fuel breaks, fuel reductions, roadside fuel reductions, defensible space, and onsite water storage. In addition to this, the forest management plan also provides for fire prevention measures. An environmental impact report should be prepared because the caretaker's residence would have a significant effect on the environment. Staff has determined that none of the issues contained in the correspondence submitted by Friends of the North Fork warrant a fair argument such that the proposed project would require NEIR. With that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission uphold the decision of the zoning administrator and take the following actions. Number one, deny the third-party appeal filed by Friends of the North Fork. Two, adopt the mitigated negative declaration as modified and as shown in Attachment G and the mitigation moderate monitoring program, which is included as Attachment H, that has been, being prepared for the project and has been finalized pursuant to CEQA. Number three, uphold the zoning administrator's decision to approve a minor use permit to allow for the construction of a 1,800-square-foot residence and a 25 by 25-square-foot garage on one of two 2-acre building sites. Number four, approve the zoning administrator's approved conditions of approval as modified in Attachment F. Happy to answer any questions.
Melanie, I do have one question. If you can go back to the picture that shows the two building envelopes.
Yeah.
Okay, right there. Because my eyes aren't quite that good. I, I can't see the elevation numbers. Can you tell me the elevation numbers right around the?
Can you see them there?
I, unless they were really.
I just thought it'd help you. Maybe if you could see it on the screen.
Well, I, I know one of the big conflicts is, is the visual aspect of it. And I've seen pictures of it and everything, but with something like that where I, I know that, that you're saying it's sort of screened, I hear it's screened, it's not screened and everything. I'm assuming those are all engineered numbers around there. And the size of that building envelope is what, about two acres, acre and a half, two acres?
That's correct.
And from here, it looks fairly flat on there, but I can't tell if where it's sitting, if it's setting down, if the elevation lines go up a little bit and then drop down, or if it's flat and they drop down. I was just wondering if you can sort of let me know what those numbers are, how flat it is. And, and then also another question that goes with that, and I don't know if you can answer it. What, what's the building height maximum for residential construction? And is this a one-story, two-story proposed project?
I cannot recall, but I, if we had limited it to a one-story residence, but that's something that could be incorporated into the conditions of approval. Off the top of my head, I know that the elevations in that area, site number one is, the elevation there is 2,200 square feet. From visiting the property, I, when I was on building site number one, it appeared to me to be more of a hill, at least in the area where the building sites are. But what I can tell you is that the elevations right there are 2,200 feet. And then the following elevation is 2,100 feet, which are the darker lines. And then, and then the second building site is approximately 2,200 feet as well. Again, the following line there is 2,100 square feet, and below that is 2,000 square feet.
So, so the drop, maximum drop in, in the envelope there is four, five, six feet?
From what I can tell, it would be, five, 10, 15, 20, so it'd be like 2220.
For the whole envelope?
Yeah.
Okay.
Actually, no, I'm sorry, I have that wrong. I think it's 100. So it would be 2240.
Okay, just roughly.
Roughly.
20. 25 feet, okay. That just gives me a good, good picture. Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, I do, I, I see on page three where we're showing existing land use and zoning. See, I got down to the east part of the parcels to the east, and I kind of got thrown into the loop by Monteverde Estates because my observation is that Monteverde Estates is down close to Ponrosa Way, and this is Yankee Jim's Road. And so I think that's in air that Monteverde Estates is to the east. And I went so far as to look up in the assessor's records and to the east side of the property is, appears to be about 120 acres of TPZ land. Actually, I guess some of the neighbors, risers, or the people that own that, as well as the remaining canyon lands are, belong to the USA, as well as the Placer Land Trust. And so this goes on, you may want to correct that so that it actually reflects, reflects the lands that are to the east of this part, these parcels.
Okay.
And then I was looking at, on page 51, there's a map in there that shows the four parcels that exist in this 600 acre, 600 plus or minus acre area. And along the ridge where our two building sites are, appear to be some boxes that could be parcels, it says refer to, it's real hard to read, but it says C sheet, whatever. And so I guess what my question is, what is this map really showing us?
Well, I want to say that these are.
I can assist, Melanie, if you.
Thank you.
Rebecca Taber from the Engineering and Surveying Division. And I'd like to point out that this map, it's useful for location and provides the roadways and the building sites. It's, it was developed by the engineer as part of a, a plan set that was for the, was for grading plans for a previous, for a grading permit. And the, those are referring to other sheets that were in that plan set. So they're not parcel lines. There's, yeah, maybe one, two, three, four, five sheets that are referred to. You'd see the blow up of that area with the contours and the grading. So, so ignore those, those sheet references for this purpose.
You said there were five.
There's, yeah, there's one, two, three, oh, there's four parcels that make up the 600 acres. And there's one, two, three, four, five, well, maybe six, yeah, five sheets that get into more detail, I guess, apparently is what we're saying.
Probably a previous application. Was it a previous application project?
Right. I have it, if, if you'd like to see it. It's, it's a set of, of plans. So those sheets, the five sheets you were, you counted, you know, there, there are different sheets in this set. It's, it's not really relevant for.
Yeah, it's something we should disregard in this.
Right.
Analysis.
Right. If you'd like to see it, we do have it, though.
Previous application.
Okay, thank you.
Melanie, in page 118, and I think there are a couple of pages after that, there is, I get some suggestion that this property was for sale or has been for sale at one point, in that it marketed itself as something that could be split up with housing sites on, I think up to three housing sites. And is that the case, or it is, is it this property that that's referencing? Because they, the amount of acreage just, it happens to be about the same.
It is referencing this property. I believe they're referencing an improved parcel map that they've processed in 2005, I believe. That has not been recorded yet, so as, as of right now, they couldn't be sold proper, separately, I'm sorry.
Right.
And if they were to do that, if they did file the final map, they would be three separately saleable properties. But they would only be buildable if they each went through this process. They would have to be, they'd have to acquire a minor use permit to allow for a caretaker's residence.
Well, could it, could it be bigger than a caretaker's residence on that? I mean, there's certainly, there's a suggestion that it could be a residence, somebody could live there as their home.
It would be the same, it would be the same as what we're doing right now. They'd have to apply for caretaker's residence and there would, this, it would be subject to the farm worker housing.
So it'd be a maximum of 1,200 now?
Correct.
Okay.
So, so I guess, from my understanding of this, if, if they sold, they'd have to go through the same process as we're going through today, meet the same requirements and everything.
Yeah, the separate property owners.
But it really, they couldn't put a 3,500 square foot house on it and somebody made that a main residence, something like that, right?
That's correct. They'd have to rezone the property.
Okay.
Right.
Any, anybody else?
Did you say it would have to be rezoned if somebody wanted just to put a house and not call it caretaker's?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Is that a minimum acreage for a caretaker unit?
Um, well, we are, it would be limited to the TPZ Zone District, which is 160 acres.
160. Let me see, what, does kind of raise a question, and I guess you have to get into the zoning administrator's head on this, but how do you distinguish a residence from a caretaker's house?
Well, the, it's essentially, it is a residence, but it has different standards of how, of the use. So what happens is, we approve it for the certain use, which would be the timber operation. It has to be used for timber operation. And, and so if the operation at any point stopped, then at that point, the caretaker's residence basically has to be abandoned. It either has to be converted to storage or removed from the property. It can no longer be used as a residence. If it changed hands and it was still going to be used for timber operations, then it could be, remain as a residence.
Okay. Let me see, maybe just another question that goes through my mind. What's approved is a, a detached or detached garage?
It's attached or detached.
Right. And so at any rate, if it's an attached, then theoretically with 1,800 square feet, it could become a residence of, oh, 2,400 square feet. And if it's detached, of course, it wouldn't. But then, you know, typically in agricultural operations and potentially forestry operations, if there's equipment required to maintain the forestry operation, there could be, and I'm, I guess I'm wondering in TPZ, it seems like a lot of, like equipment storage, barns and that kind of stuff, I think typically in Placer County, and I may be wrong on this, don't really require a building permit if it's for agricultural use. And so on this particular parcel, could they also add a equipment storage building in addition to garage?
They, I mean, they'd have to apply for a building permit.
For, for an equipment storage building?
Yes. I believe, and I'm not an expert here.
Yeah, that's true, yeah. In the TP zone, you, you are allowed agricultural accessory structures, you know, going through the building permit process.
Going through the building permit process?
Yeah, and then, and there are certain ag exemptions, ag exemptions depending on the use, you know.
Okay.
I, I can't tell you exactly what those are, but there are some exemptions. And also the, the garage is never included in a residential square footage when we determine, you know, what's permitted. So the residence, you know, as approved is 1,800 square feet and the garage would be completely separate, and that could not be converted to a residential structure.
Okay. And so this is not necessarily equipment storage, this is for cars and story, whatever, right? Like a regular garage is what we're talking about.
Whatever they want to use it for, under those, what you just mentioned.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Going back to the difference between a caretaker unit and a residence, if I follow you right, the property has to remain in the TPZ category. If they reforest one year, does that mean for the next 100 years, you can just live there in the house as a caretaker without anything else going on, really?
If they're operating a timber operation, then.
The operation is, if they reforest one year, they're waiting for the next 50 to grow it, they're still under that, you know, category of being.
In business, shall we say?
Um, if it.
The caretakers don't actually have to go out and do something, correct?
Well, essentially, I mean, they would be managing the property, so.
Well, if, yeah, okay. I guess maybe I would try to answer that because in forestry operations, you don't just wait 100 years to harvest, it takes thinning, a lot of management activities along the way to protect the forest from fire and. It should take it, but it doesn't have to. I mean, if you don't go out and check and make sure that they're managing it, do you? I mean, so they.
We can have that discussion later.
Well, I'm just curious, the difference between the residence and the caretaker, that's, that's, that's what I'm, I'm getting at, right?
To be actively engaged in a, in a forestry project, isn't there an annual plan that needs to be filed and approved, your, your forestry plan kind of thing? Doesn't that have to be kept current?
I believe so. I think it may be better to allow the applicant to answer to that.
Sure. Yeah, I would.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Melanie.
Thank you.
Okay, if the, someone would like to come forward, Michael?
I'm just going to get it ready for you.
Okay.
Get it to the right place. Just had it. Then it disappeared. Just had it, then it disappeared.
Oh, good thing I'm not up there operating that, you'd be in real trouble.
Good morning, Commissioners and staff. Michael Garabedian, representing Friends of the North Fork, the appellant. And looking forward to our conversation and discussion this morning. Friends of the North Fork, as you, I'm sure know, are a group that work to protect the sustainable natural resources of the American River Canyon. We're in our 10th year. And just last December, our board decided to become a membership organization. So we hope to have more, more individual involvement in our issues, which are, the purpose of our organization in terms of the county is to try to help you make decisions, give you information that we hope you will find useful and apply. I want to thank Gay Wiseman for doing this tremendous work on this PowerPoint. It's the first time we've used a PowerPoint, first time I've used a PowerPoint, so, but I'm confident we'll make it through. So this is, this is the regional context of the Sierra Nevada. You see Mono Lake, where is Lake Tahoe? Right in the middle, it's dark, so that's not Mono Lake, that's Lake Almanar, I guess. And you can, it's hard to see on this, you'll see it better on the next one, I think, if I can change this. This, on the left, you see the Folsom Reservoir, and, okay, pointer. The Folsom Reservoir, and this is the Middle Fork, South Fork here, going up towards Highway 50. The North Fork actually starts here, the North Fork goes up here, and then the Middle Fork, the confluence is right here, the Middle Fork splits off up here. The North Fork, which we focus on, goes, goes on up to the backside of Squaw Valley. This is a, this is a view of Camel's Hump from Tokyama Road. I forget what exit this is, maybe it's Cross or Weimar Cross exit. Anyway, you can, you go through the railroad tunnel and up on Tokyama...
Tokayana.
Tokayana, thank you, Ridge. And this picture was taken in this direction, towards Camel Hump, Camel's Hump. You can, you can see here the North Fork, and you can see here the Sewage Dam, that's Quan III and this Colfax sewer operation, you see Colfax here. And this, this is Smothers Ravine that goes past the Edwards House, which is about here, probably that dot, and then it goes, comes out to Yankee Jim's Road where there's a locked gate. And we'll be talking more about that, more about the viability, the value of this as a water source for fire and other needs. So this is the shot, this is a picture, looking over towards a very dry-looking Camel's Hump. We've taken, I've taken pictures up there. I think this was Gay's picture in different season when it's much more robust-looking. This is a drought picture. This is, this is a picture looking downstream from Iowa Hill Bridge, and you can, this is, this is the ridge of, let's see here, oh, I've got my finger in the way. This is the, looking down Camel's Hump. These pictures were labeled at one point, the labels aren't here. And then this is, this is the Iowa Hill Divide. We're looking again at Camel's Hump there, and over here is Colfax. Now, this is a picture looking back up towards, kind of to the north. Again, you see the Gillis Hill Ridge, and this is the Camel's Hump. And the, the promontory, what we call the promontory ridge, where the two houses are proposed, are, the promontory point on three sides is here, and then the second one approved by the zoning administrator is up there. Oh, I wanted to use this slide to show that I took this hike on December 30th with my cousin, and we took the hardest possible way to get up there, I think. And then as, as we approached Camel's Hump, I took these pictures, looking, looking at, looking down and seeing the promontory ridge. This is one picture, it shows the southernmost promontory and part of the road. This another one shows this boundary marker, again, looking down at the promontory lot and further up, looking down. This is a topo, obviously a topo map, you can get a, a, a good picture here of the steep nature of this terrain, and also here on the promontory point, this extremely steep slope right below the house, one of the proposals there, and we'll see better, better topo maps of that. Yeah, this, this is a, oh, here's, I thought this was gone, it's with us. And this is, the Camel's Hump is about, is 2,600 feet, and the, the promontory ridge is about 2,356, kind of in the, in the mid, around about here, so that must be the high Now, this is the, these are the one, two, three, four, these are the four assessors' parcels that make up the 600 acres that you've seen before. And so what happened in 2005, oh, okay, this was, this, this is urgent, the fire, the extreme fire hazard, this is from the county's fire hazard map. And as you are all probably familiar, this, this whole area, including in the state responsibility areas, extreme fire hazard. So the, the land division that took place in 2005, and that was continued in 2008, was these three lots. And these, these are the minimum, 160, 160, I think this is 277. And there were three houses, locations associated with that. This one, a little bit north of Camel's Hump where there's a wellhead, this is the southernmost of the promontory where there's a wellhead, and then there's the other third one about here. Now, something I just want to point out while we're here, there's been some controversy, it has been suggested that Camel's Hump is entirely on private property. Well, this is, this is a section line here between the 600 acre property and public land, and you can, you can see the main outline of the high, contour line of Camel's Hump and that half of it, the actual hump itself, is in the 600 acre rezon, TPZ parcel, and half of it is here. Now, this, this project failed, and it, it can't and shouldn't succeed. Let's see, oops, okay. This was an appeal, that, this is the appeal document that was made after the 2005 decision. And as they, oops, as they wrote, as they wrote in their decision, "Appeal condition number 5A," that's the road improvements we're still working with today, "are not reasonable for number of parcels and size of parcels." Well, that is exactly right. TPZ land is not meant to be subdivided for residential purposes, and it, maybe if you were living in a flat area around, oh, near Shast or something, and you could make a road, a simple road into, into your caretaker residence, this, this, this parcel is very different. The county has looked to the Edwards property, and we'll get to that, as a 1,800, they've looked to the size of that as an example, kind of as a precedent they think of following. The issue, the whole issue in this issue, the major issue here is, okay, we need to follow the precedent that the Edwards has, Edwards House has of being located in an area with, with water, below the, at the bottom of a slope, which is advised in the Blonsky material we've distributed to you, you know, not to put houses up on the rim. So this, 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 this was bound to fail. If this application, if this application for 4,000 square foot house was, began construction, the assessor and perhaps the Board of Equalization would have every right to yank the TPZ zone. It would take it out of TPZ. They're paying about $1.30 per acre.
Michael?
Yes?
Can I tell you?
Yes, please.
We're not dealing with something that had failed or whatever. Can you keep it more on the project as we're talking, not 4,000 square foot houses or anything? I mean, go ahead and make your point, but quickly.
Okay.
I, I just think we're wandering here onto, onto other areas.
Okay, this is the, this is again the 600 acre parcel. This is the Edwards property, a 519 acre TPZ, and this is the Risser property. This is a two-square-mile area set aside in TPZ and by the original owners. It's split up into these ownerships probably about 2004. They've owned this since 2004. And that is, this is a case of private property owners voluntarily entering into a TPZ and making this a model, an economic unit of the county, supporting of the county economy through forestry operations. This, this slide shows the, the communities, the communities along Interstate 80 that, that are subject to potential fire hazards coming up out of the canyon. And this is the, oops. This gives a little picture, this is, this is, basically Yankee Jim's Road is the boundary between the TPZ forestry operation and this, the developing area here. And we're, the county's actions up to this time have all been, have resulted in helping to protect this area so far. This, this just shows the, the density when you, here, once again, we have Yankee Jim's Road. This shows the next door density, the density between that and the highway and approaching, and this, this shows the pressure, the pressure that there is to develop. This is the outline of the 2001 Ponderosa Fire. It burned, here, oh, oops, oops. This is, this is the ridge, this is the Gillis Hill Ridge, here's, here's Camel's Hump, and the fire perimeter burned across, burned the side of Yankee Jim's Road. And this is the, this is the promontory point, this is the, the, what we call the promontory point, the south-approved housing. The fire, the fire obviously burned right over that, which you can imagine, it's a very narrow slope. The other, the other house, interestingly enough, was stopped right before that, that location. I think this next one, just, it shows, it shows the fire outline again and the close-up view of the southern promontory house and the northern promontory house. It's probably a good point, a good point to comment about the, the building envelope. I mean, it is not a fire-stay practice to approve two structures in a high fire, as an area that might be within 30 feet of another. Structures can ignite another structure, so it is not a sound, this whole project is full of a lot of unsound practices. This is, there's one house on the ridge, it's a house owned by the Risser family. This is, this is, and it's back, it's back from, the Camel's Hump is over here. And this little road here, they have a driveway into their house, and this little road here is the, leads also, is at the same elevation and level as their house, which we'll see in a second. This shows the kind of extreme hazard situation that, that people on this ridge can face. Highly volatile, there's kind of a flat area down here, I know they do a lot of work to clear vegetation here. That's the wrong location for a house, it's the wrong ridge for a house. Oh, and this shows the Risser house here, and the river's down here, and it shows the Risser house in relation to the promontory, where the, the northernmost one here and the other one's about there. This is a view looking up again. The, the Risser house was about here, and again, in this case, the promontory house and lots are here. The, and behind this, oops, behind this ridge is Smothers Ravine where the Allen Edwards House is. And this next picture, it shows a picture of Smothers, oops, of Smothers Ravine. This is Yankee Jim's Road here. This is the turnoff, it's Gillis Hill Road, this is a turnoff, the gate, the locked gate is here. And then this road goes up to, at this point here, I think I've got it spotted right, this is the Edwards House. The, the road, this, the road turns right here and goes up, up to the promontory points, which are over here. Every, every point, every issue in this, in this project, point tells us, suggests to us that, that a better location on the property probably exists than being on the rim where there are fire and visual and different kinds of impacts. And so this, it's along this road here that, that we, we think absolutely needs to be looked at as a potential location for the, for a caretaker, if a caretaker residence is going to be built, which we don't think is necessary for various reasons, partly because the Bascons live right over here, within a quarter mile of the corner of the property, and they have a parcel up on the hill that, that actually connects at a corner to their, to their TPZ land. But this is, this is where we, we think the, the project needs to go back to the drawing boards to consider this valley with its steady water source from the sewer plant and, let's see here, this, now, this is, this is a view of the Smothers Ravine Valley again, and this, this shows again the, the road going up, there's another road there, but this shows the road going up and the promontory over here. Let's see, I think, okay. Well, this, this, this again is the valley here, I'll go back, the slides are a little changed. And this area along here has the same, same soil type as the, these, the promontory part here. This is a different little, better soil back here. But the point is that along the road, which we think is an alternate location, at least the fact that the soils are the same up here and down there and likely to be thinner up here, there are all sorts of other problems up here, once again, is another reason to not put these on the promontory. And this is, this is the soils map, let's see, well, here's the, trying to find the, It's a little hard to see this one, but here's, here's Gillis Hill. This, this is, this is the, I think this is the promontory here. Anyway, this, this soil type identification, 170 here, runs down along here. Oh, and this, this shows the, this is the area where the soil type here and the soil type out here are the same. What did I miss in terms of slides? I think, I think that's it. I think, I think that's it. Thank you for bearing with our, our historic to us slide presentation. The, uh, all of the issues here, uh, point towards changing that house location. The economic issues to protect this, this part of the county natural resource base. The timb, the timber production zone. There is a question about the, the view of the house from the canyon. It seems that there, it can't be seen from the river. We, we haven't looked at it, it, anyway. The question under TPZ is the view from the house. This is a, this is a place that has a, nearly a 300 degree view from the promontory. This, putting a house there, what, 1,800, 2,000, 4,000 foot house, changes the use of this property to make it a high value view lot property. There's no question, there's little question in my mind, not much, that if, if they started building a 4,000 foot house there, that would put an end to their exemption, either by the assessor or perhaps the Board of Equalization.
Yeah, yeah. Michael, you, you keep bringing in things that aren't part of this. It's not, there's no 4,000 square foot house. In other words, if this is approved, you're guaranteed it's not going to be a 4,000 square foot house. I, I keep hearing you, you drag things in that aren't part of this application and part of this hearing.
Well, I agree, the 4,000 is, may not be part of it.
Well, I, you know.
It's not gonna, thank you for saying it's not gonna happen.
Yeah.
But, but the, the TPZ issue where the county is, uh, contemplating and approving actions could, that could affect their TPZ status, that, that the house on this location is absolutely incompatible with a TPZ land. The fire prevention issues all suggest that this is, this is the wrong location on this promontory and that, that the, the valley with its being at the bottom of slope and other key issues, um, is a much safer place for a house from fire prevention purposes. Uh, same thing, forest management is, the, the Forest Practice Act names, identifies visual issues right up front as part of forest practice. The, the, the Forest Management Plan addendum you have supports putting a caretaker house on here, on this without addressing any of the visual impact issues. And it's not only visual impact issues that affect the forestry use. You put a house in these, in this location, uh, people might, it, it, well, just, just the, uh, the house ignition zone around it, the 30 feet safe defensive, defensive space, and then the, the ignition zone issue of 100 feet wide, 300 feet wide, the danger of embers and stuff coming up that hill, make that a extremely dangerous, hazardous fire location that can be avoided by putting a house down in the valley. The, it, but the visual, there are visual recreation issues. The Camel's Hump is a historic landmark used by the miners, and it should be respected as a place that the view from that area should be considered to be a major view issue as well as from other public lands, but especially from there and, and that area, that place deserving formal recognition as, as a landmark. The Auburn State Recreation Area continues another five miles upstream, another 15 miles downstream, down the river miles down to the, the confluence. What is done on the edge of the, the ASRA is major recreational issue. The, the Board of Forestry, the, the, the Forestry Comment Letters expresses three things that need to be done, either a THP, rezone, or conversion. The, our appeal is not forest conservation, it should have read forest land conversion is, is a major issue in our appeal. But, um, you know, I, I just wanted to mention that issue. There were some questions that came up earlier. I wanted to address, um, the, okay, I covered that. So, um, for 10 years, the applicants have, have owned this property. The Forest Management Addendum does not say how many trees they planted, doesn't even say they have planted the trees. We assume they planted trees and staff has informed us that they planted trees, but we don't see it. You know, we don't see the results of trees coming up on the property. They've got a grant now to do that, finally. Looks like, and maybe they have been doing it, maybe they can explain what they've done, the number of trees they've been putting in. And I, I think, um, oh, black, there was, Black Bear Road was on the, on the, one of the sketches showed by the staff. That is not a public road. There aren't any public roads on this property that we know. I mean, you can't access this property because it's a lock gate. And, um, anyway, I'd like to be able to reserve a little time or come back later to answer anything that's brought up in the here, rest of the hearing, if you don't mind.
Okay, okay. And there's probably some questions.
I have a question.
Yes.
Michael, you, you mentioned several residences here, and I didn't remember all their names. Are any of those that you mentioned in that area, those individual ones in those large parcels, are any of those on, in TPZ zoned land?
Uh, the Edwards house is, yes. The one down in Smothers Ravine.
One of them, one of those.
The, um, the, I can show you then.
No, that's okay. At least, you said, you said one.
Oh, well.
That answers my question.
The Risser house is, uh, it, on a small parcel north, north of his 120 acre TPZ zone, as I, as I understand it.
Okay, thank you.
Question out of curiosity, I guess.
Your mic.
Oh, sorry. When you began, you re, you, you said, made reference that Friends of the North Fork is now a membership organization?
We're working on our bylaws, yes.
Okay, so you, you have no, who, who is Friends of the, who, who makes it up now?
It's a six-member board.
Uh-huh.
But who's on it?
Uh, don't need, Dave, there's six, six members on a, on a board and, and then you represent that board?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and, and you're, you're getting ready to open it up to members, but at this point you have, have no membership other than those boards?
No, we don't, we don't, our, we need to change our bylaws to provide for members. Uh, what, what we do is bring information to the county, and, uh, like I said, that's our practice of, uh, letting you know what we think should be done. And this, this slideshow is an example of something we've done for the first time for you and for the public.
Do, do any of those six members live in the vicinity of this project?
Um, in the vicinity, I live, by the way, in, across the border in Placer, in Sacramento County. Uh, yeah, Jay Shuttleworth is from a family, he's teaching in New York, but he's from a Placer County family. Bill Newsom, Judge Newsom, uh, has his home in, uh, Dust Flat. Nan, Nan Kaufman has her house on Moody Ridge. Craig Donato, internet entrepreneur, he owns land on Sorefinger Point down on the river. And Catherine O'Reilly, actually, she, she lives slightly, she lives over off Dog Bar in the Bear River watershed. But yes, we have, I, I don't know if that answers your question, but, uh, Sorefinger Point is nearby and, um, uh, you know, there are, does that answer your question?
I think so, yes.
Yeah, question, Michael. If I can paraphrase, what you're primarily suggesting is that the main objections you have for this is not that they're not allowed.
To have a caretaker unit or shouldn't be allowed to have a caretaker unit so much as the location of the, of the house.
Location is an issue runs across, across everything. We don't think it is, Bill, we don't think it's necessary because there aren't security problems. We don't think it's necessary. We would prefer for a, a forest conservation buyer or, or for the landowners in the future to, uh, if, if it did transfer, change hands, for the, that buyer to decide where they wanted to, to put a house. And hopefully they would put it in a, a fire safe in all, all these other factor location. But yes, the, um, that, putting the house, looking at that, that road as a possible place to put it, it seems like common sense solution to all these.
To basically view and fire.
Fire, the visual issues.
So the relocation would handle both of those in your opinion?
Sorry?
The relocation would handle both of those objections?
I think it could.
All right.
And it, it could also save the county from losing a TPZ through inappropriate development, keeping the land in forest production.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Okay. This time I'll let the applicant come up and state their position.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board Members. My name's Kevin Nelson, Nelson Engineering, representing the owner and original applicant on this. First of all, I have to thank Melanie. I think she's done a wonderful job preparing this staff report and working with us the last two years, uh, putting this together. As you can see from your staff reports, this has been a long, uh, trying battle that we've gone through, but thanks to Melanie and, and staff for working with us and getting us this far and getting our zoning administrator, administrator's approval. Just to clarify a couple of questions the Commissioners had earlier, Commissioner Johnson regarding the map comments, yeah, Rebecca, I'd hopefully address those clear enough for you. There is no partialization there. That map was referencing, uh, some of the detailed drawings we prepared to show how some of the roads and driveway configurations. We prepared plan and profile sheets so they can see that we can construct a driveway to access these sites and still meet driveway standards. So those dashed lines were referencing, uh, an indexing of those sheets detailing driveways. So hopefully, yeah, that clarifies that for you as well. And hopefully, clarifying Commissioner Gray's comments regarding the homeowner caretaker question, that can and potentially could be one of the same, much as Mr. Edwards' property is, the caretaker could potentially be the owner of the land as well. So just wanted to clarify those couple of things. And then, uh, I'm glad you kind of pointed out, unfortunately, it seems like the appellant was going all over the place with, and not focusing on the merits of his appeal. We're here to look at the zoning administration's administrator's decision here. And that is obviously reflected in his presentation on, you know, pointing out several of the view corridors and the views, a lot of those pictures being taken from airplanes. Clearly, your views are going to be substantially different from an airplane than they would be from down on the ground. So, uh, a couple of the other things he pointed out regarding, uh, an appeal for this application previously, that wasn't an appeal for this application, that was an appeal for a previous application that you mentioned, that was a rezone as part of the previously approved tentative parcel map that was also, uh, talked about in his presentation. That isn't a part of this decision. That was an approved tentative parcel map that is still, um, a valid parcel map, but hasn't moved forward. That's not part of this decision. I hope the Commissioners, uh, aren't looking at that in this particular.
Maybe I could ask a question about that?
Sure.
I guess what comes, comes up is, uh, that's really not clear, you know, and I, I hear what you're saying, you know, because we currently have four parcels and they're clearly identified and, and that's what you have right now. But is that revision in the partialization into three parcels, is that still pending or being considered, or is that just kind of off the chart?
At this point, it's off the, off the chart. It is still a current, um, tentative map application or approved tentative map that hasn't expired, so it is still valid.
Also, it was approved.
It was approved. The parcel map was approved. There was an application, as he showed, for an appeal for a rezone completely separate from.
So why do we have four parcels instead of three parcels?
Um, well, it was a matter of getting those parcels to meet the TPZ minimum zoning of 160 acres. Currently, right now, I forget the exact acreages.
Well, there's a couple of parcels that are below 160 acres.
Correct, correct.
But those, that's a current partialization in the assessor's office.
The four parcels that are currently shown there are as the assessor currently shows.
But you're saying it's three parcels? It's not four parcels?
The approved tentative parcel map was for three parcels. That is correct.
If I, if I could help explain, hopefully I can do this. There, there's, there's assessor parcel numbers assigned to the properties, but there aren't actually four separately legal parcels.
That is.
So there's a difference between the assessor parcel numbers that are shown and, and the actual number of legal, right, as Karen said, tax parcel versus a legal parcel.
Well, now, now that I'm, I'm confused, maybe this.
But, but.
This'll, this'll help me. If this was approved today as it is, it would be three parcels at the end of the day. Would it be, is, or is that a misconception on my part? Is it four parcels? Or if it was approved?
So the approved, and, and help me if I'm wrong here, but the approved parcel map is for three separately legally sellable parcels?
Correct. Currently, it's one entire parcel.
Right.
It just happens to be, because there's, I think there's three separate assessor's pages that encompass the entire property.
Let me, let me chime in here. It's not uncommon in this county to see the assessor having assigned what's referred to really as a tax parcel for purposes of taxation. But under the Subdivision Map Act, that tax parcel doesn't necessarily constitute a legal parcel that can be subdivided and sold off. Therefore, what, what you see here is we have four tax parcels assigned, different tax assessor numbers for purposes of taxation. But the parcel map that was approved was for three legal lots that were consistent with the underlying zoning. And as the applicant has mentioned, that tentative parcel map is still a valid map, has not been recorded. Therefore, as I understand it, if, if you wanted to sell this property, you'd be selling the whole thing because that is really what you have as your parcel for purposes of the Subdivision Map Act versus your assessor tax parcels for purposes of taxation.
So basically, if they want to sell it, then all they really would have to do is to record the three parcels?
They could either sell it today as the entire parcel, uh, which would come along with four tax assessor numbers, but it's one legal lot for purposes of sale under the Subdivision Map Act. Or they could proceed to satisfy the conditions and record the parcel map that would divide it into three legal lots, each of which could be individually sold after that map is recorded.
Okay.
And then just one more bit of information, that approved map does not expire until June of 2017.
Okay.
Question, just, uh, each one of the three would be sufficient for the TPZ zoning 160 acres?
It's correct.
Yes.
That is correct.
Okay, well, thank you. That clarifies it.
Yeah. And just, once again, this tentative parcel map isn't what we're here for today.
Yeah.
But to, just to help clarify some of that.
And we just had to understand what we're talking about.
Yeah. And there is, in order to make them into three parcels, there's a whole nother additional step that needs to be taken place, and that being. that needs to be taken place, and that being the filing of the final parcel map, which, as staff will concur with, there's a whole list of conditions of approval that need to be met, including road improvements and water source, sewer source, and all that that needs to be met before that map can even be recorded. So, you know.
Okay.
Completely separate application, but hopefully you're right.
Thank you. That clarifies it for me at any rate, yeah.
Okay, and I know one of the, one of the big issues is, is that this wouldn't be a timber production operation. Maybe if you could enlighten us as to the steps and things that you're doing now and what you have to do and maybe even get into the long term, because I know it's been stated that, well, nobody needs to live on the property, you know, for 20, 30, 40 years.
Yeah, definitely part of my presentation here. And one other thing, just real quickly, I want to, I do want to clarify and point out, the appellant had mentioned several times, the Camel's Hump site location. As part of our working with staff and the neighbors, even the appellant, we removed that site a year ago. So that's not even on the table, but it, you know, once again, keeps coming up. So I just want to make sure that's very clear, that the Camel's Hump is not even on the table. The two sites that were depicted by both staff and the appellant are the two other sites that aren't promontory in terms of visual from the river or many other areas throughout.
Maybe another quick question?
Sure.
I guess, you know, the staff report keeps talking about two sites, but we're talking about one caretaker's.
Correct.
And so I guess I'm, what I'm wondering is, why aren't we just talking about one caretaker's site?
Once again, we wanted the opportunity to have two sites available, but only one of them will get built on. Melanie did reference that, that this is just two proposed sites, but only one will get built on, not both. And I think the appellant even referenced that multiple structures could present fire danger here. Talking about one structure on either one of those sites. We just have, we wanted to have the option for one of the other and have that flexibility as we move forward with, working with a caretaker of potentially his preferences on where would be the best site to manage the property.
Okay, I think, yeah.
Does that help?
Well, yeah, I think you answered it with the last statement. I was wondering, you know, what's preventing you from making a decision? But you're relying on some kind of a professional decision from a caretaker that you may hire?
Correct, yeah. And once again, that's something we've been working with staff for over two years now to try to clarify those. And the Camel's Hump was a third site when we started this over two years ago. And through the process, we eliminated that site.
Yeah, I guess maybe I might be getting beyond your, or maybe let you have your presentation first. But I guess the kind of questions come up, as far as lower down in the hill, down along the drainage, have you looked at building sites down there?
Not particularly, yeah. These particular sites, we felt, were the least impactful. They have logging roads already going up to them. They're fairly clear, cleared already. Pardon? Oh, I'm not saying there isn't other potential sites.
As opposed to something else? And you're saying, well, it's being dependent on a caretaker you haven't hired yet to make that decision? So I was wondering what decisions you were going to be able to allow him to have, or if he wanted to be down there in the bottom?
At this point, pending this approval, he's going to have two choices, and these are what we've come up with.
I was just wondering, site characteristics down lower? You know, I guess what I'm visualizing is kind of a canyon bottom. And I'm making some assumptions here that there aren't any suitable sites down there. But I was just wondering if you had looked.
In 600 acres, there could be all kinds of suitable sites. We chose these as being.
Just because of the access, okay.
There's already existing logging roads, the clearings there. The grading and impact would be minimal to probably do a single-story house. And so, yeah, your cuts and fills might be, you know, 12, 18 inches. So we're not cutting up a hillside and trying to create a level pad area. These are already pretty level up there on that ridge. I think you had an earlier question about the elevations and such. And, yeah, those elevations, the appellant pointed out about 2,300, actually just a little bit under that, about 2,000, 2,280. I realize you couldn't quite see those.
And apparently, it sounded like you have wellheads already there?
Yes.
Okay, so that would be another factor.
Correct, and we've had perken mantle testing done in those areas as well. And that is part of the decision process of choosing those sites as well.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Just a couple of other things, real quickly, I did want to point out, and be happy to answer some other questions. One of the big questions seems to be regarding the implementation of this property as a forest management property. And as you've seen in your staff reports, staff mentioned, the appellant mentioned, we do have a forest management plan that has been implemented. This property is part of a property that USDA has provided grant monies for. We just actually, when we got some of the appellant's information, seeing that that was an issue and concern, we asked them to put together a map that unfortunately, I couldn't get to Melanie quick enough, that shows the areas that have been mapped, and I'd be happy to provide copies for you that shows what was done in 2011, 12, and 13, and the potential remaining areas that are treatable and targeted on the property. Looks something like that. I don't know if you would like me to pass these around?
I'd truly like to see it, because that was going to be one of my questions, as far as an implementation map?
Sure. And the appellant also did mention that, or questioned whether or not there's been any trees planted out there. And there's actually been over 50,000 trees been planted on the property in the last three years. There's another 20,000 planned for this next winter as we continue to manage the property out there. The, oh, yeah, I was just, also, our, Doug Farrar, who prepared the forest management plan, is also here and could potentially address any of your questions regarding the forest management plan as well. Yeah, other than that, really didn't have a whole lot to add to the staff report. As I mentioned, we feel Melanie's done a wonderful job working with us and preparing the documentation for the appellant's, addressing each and every one of those concerns. Our, my encouragement to the board is to uphold the ZA's decision. We are in agreement with all the conditions that were set forth then. And we're encouraging the board to make the same findings as well. With that, I'd be happy to answer any other.
Maybe one more question, and I think I had a question here too. But I guess one of the things I'm thinking about is, you know, if we go forward with the proposal today, we're talking about one caretaker house for 600 acres.
Correct.
And, you know, you look at the ag commissioner's input, and of course, there's thousands of acres in the county that are in TPZ that don't require a caretaker's house. And so we have two, actually two 600 acres adjacent here that have what would be called caretaker houses on them. And so I guess, look into the future. If in fact, you move forward and make the three parcels, I guess the concern that I'm wondering about is, are we going to be talking about proposals for three caretaker houses? Or if one caretaker house was good enough for 600 acres, what are we looking at in the future here?
When and if, I think Melanie addressed this as well, when and if that does take place, each and every one of those parcels moving forward would be subject to the same process. And once again, staff, ZA, or yourselves would obviously have that opportunity to address those same questions at that time. Today, we're here to address our application, which is one caretaker on 600 acres.
Yeah, which is based on the implementation plan that you just presented.
Correct.
Right.
And that's what we're encouraging you to look at, not so much what could potentially happen down the road.
Okay.
And then, for my clarification on that, if that were to happen, because it shows what you're doing now is over the whole 600 acres, the permits, everything that you have would sort of go away. Wouldn't it, I mean, you can't transfer your main permit for your TPZ to three separate entities.
I'm not quite fond, if I.
Right now, what, the parcel you showed us, you know, the map you showed with what you're doing and everything for developing this into timber production, you have one permit.
Correct.
And it's under one person.
Correct.
So if you subdivided and sold off those three.
Each one of those parcels would be subject to.
Right, I mean, in other words, your permit's gonna, is only good for what you have there. So you'd have to go through the whole process for each of the three again.
What we currently have today.
Yeah.
That would be correct.
So that'd require grants and everything would probably.
Well, yeah, we would be subject to coming back and either modifying our management plan or getting new permits for the new parcels. And then, once again, that'd be subject to staff review and the appropriate hearing body review and approval. That is correct.
You know, the fact that other parcels as large don't have a caretaker's residence might not be indicative of the need, but just the fact that not others are willing to get beat up for two-plus years to try to build a small little house.
Yeah, well, I guess we're not.
There's not everybody willing to go through that process, whether they want it or not. Not everybody's able to afford to go through that process.
I think we're really not in the discussion phase, but at any rate, one of the things that, I think the management plan does address the need here. And one of the factors, I brought that up, but I would say that a lot of the thousand acres in Placer County are basically in very large undeveloped areas. And this particular area is fairly close to some relatively, not city density, but some higher density properties and has a greater exposure to the general population. So at least that's one of my assessments. So that's a distinguishing point there, just to help out.
And one of the other things I will point out, I'm not sure if it's in your packet, but we also do have a letter from Chief Paulus that has been out to the property several times and even wrote us a letter acknowledging the improved fire safety that we have created out there as part of our management plan out there. And obviously, with the caretaker unit, it just provides additional opportunity to continue improving fire safety out there, not creating more fire hazards, so.
I have a question on the size of the structure. I'm just, while it's not part of the approval process, I kind of want to understand your thinking of why it was initially presented as a 4,000 square foot structure. And as you may have seen from what the ag commissioner said, they felt that that was a ruse to create this higher-end type of a residence out there rather than a caretaker's facility. So what was the thinking on the 4,000?
That was basically just our starting point. Once again, just trying to create some flexibility with both sites and sizes, not knowing what we potentially could have out there. Because as a caretaker facility, you're potentially looking at maybe a family being out there. Trying to find a single person may not, will, or will limit our options to what that person might be. So it was just mostly a starting point to get us going and.
Pretty sizable structure for caretaking.
Well, it, once again, it was up to 4,000 square feet, you know. It could have ended up being an 1,800 or 2,000, 2,500 square foot.
But you've obviously accepted the 1,800 square feet max now.
That is correct.
Well, yeah, we're really kind of getting into the weeds here, but maybe it's worthwhile for us to ask these questions at this point in time.
Sure.
And at least the staff report is talking about other caretaker houses that are 1,800 square feet. And I don't know how many there are, probably not many, in TPZ. And so, basically, I look at the ag commissioner's determination and, at least, he's indicating 1,200 square feet should be sufficient. And I know 1,200 feet would work for a family, because I guess I've lived in a 1,200 square foot house before. And so, at any rate, I guess one of the questions that's going through my mind is, you know, why do we continue a precedence of 1,800 square feet when, you know, feeling is for a caretaker's house that 1,200 square feet is sufficient?
So what is your question? I'm sorry?
I guess, I guess, I guess, I guess what I'm questioning is the 800, 1,800 square feet than thinking that maybe 1,200 feet, a square feet, is sufficient in terms of the criteria that you mentioned for a family.
Well, I think that's probably just a difference of opinion. 1,800 square feet sounds a little bit more comfortable for potentially a family of three or four. And once again, we just want to be able to have our options open. Maybe it does end up being a 1,200 or 1,500 square foot house. But at the time of our application, as Melanie mentioned, the criteria was 1,800 square feet. So that's what we would.
Was it a criteria or just a?
It's not a criteria.
Comparison? That's what I'm thinking about. But anyway, I guess, I guess where the issue comes from is for, for what we're talking about, if it's a caretaker's house, it's a very basic structure, because if things change, then the structure has to be, either go away or be converted to storage. And so we're not talking about spending a lot of money on the structure. And so, it's just a question that's going through my mind, and maybe, like you say, it's your opinion or whatever, but.
Exactly. I mean, once again, we're trying to maximize our potential options out there. And that's what we're asking for the approval for. And the zoning administrator had approved us for is the 1,800. So that's what we're continuing to ask for.
So you're also saying that if uses change, you're willing to walk away from that?
That is the conditions that are set forth currently right now.
Okay.
My concern, one of my biggest concern here, of all this information's been presented, the same one that Mr. Johnson has brought up, the difference between a residence and a caretaker's. And while we're not here to discuss the 4,000, 4,000 square foot, that indicates to me what the future might look like. And to me, caretaker, most of the time, on commercial property or industrial property, I know this is different, is a trailer sometimes, you know, one that's habitable with all the facilities. But it's not a structure, it's not a real building. And I'm leaning toward making it a real caretaker's one, because it says about ripping it out. Well, you're not going to take it out. I don't see any government agency, after it's been there a little while, making someone take down 1,800 or 2,000 square foot house that's got, you know, halfway decent amenities. I'm, I wonder about the caretakers and why we're all of a sudden, we need a caretaker's when it's been undergoing reforestation for a little while. But I would accept that. But I really think, uh, a caretaker should be a caretaker, not a residence. And I think there is a distinction between 1,200 and, and 1,800 square feet. So I'm leaning toward a 1,200. That would be more like a caretaker's cottage or residence rather than a family one.
Yep.
Agreed.
That's my, that's my opinion.
As a point of discussion, we run some businesses that require onsite managers. And I've had good candidates turn down the job because of the quality of the housing that was offered. You're looking at, at, you know, I mean, we, we don't want to just say that, that if you've got a caretaker's position job, that this is good enough where you take it or leave it. I think you're, you're requiring somebody to live at their job site. They need reasonable accommodations. And, and if you want quality people, you can't just go park a trailer up there and hook it up to a tank and say, there you go.
Yeah, I think there's, we, we're probably getting into a discussion point. At least my recommendation would be that we kind of let the, uh, the public speak and then we can discuss this at a, at a future time.
Any other questions, Dan?
Just a five-minute break. Okay, well, do you have any more points to make?
Nope, that was it. Uh, as I mentioned, yeah, my encouragement is to, uh, appel, uphold the ZA's decision and, uh, so we can finally continue to move forward. And if there, there are any other questions after other presentations, I'd be happy to answer them at that time as well.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll take a quick five-minute break and-
Right.
Be back.
You plant the trees and you wait a hundred years and come back. Why, why doesn't that, I mean, some of the stuff that goes on in between is the question. It's, you know, I mean, you've got a caretaker, but there's a lot of activities that go on in a hundred years.
Oh, yeah. You may be removing brush, you might be thinning the trees, you might be doing what we call TSI, timber stand improvement work on the property, and it's quite possible that the caretaker might be the one that actually does physically the work. And that's where a garage comes in, or whatever, agricultural storage building comes in for the tools and the equipment that you use, or that you might use in carrying that kind of stuff out. But also maintaining your roads is an ongoing thing as part of your managing your, the forest resources on the, on the property.
Okay. Second question, and some others may have, I want you to go into more detail on that, but at any rate, that answers that one for me. But, you know, we talk about the thousands of acres in Placer County that don't have a caretaker on it.
Correct.
How does this property distinguish from those thousands of acres?
Well, I think over the time I've written, this is about the lowest elevational TPZ zone property in Placer County. And I think you've mentioned it's also close in to a heavily developed area, Colfax vicinity. And so there are a lot of pressures on it that you wouldn't see for most undeveloped forest land within this county. Most forest land is up in the snow country, where there's only seasonal access, where it would actually be a real hardship in a lot of areas just to be able to get in there to have a caretaker's place on it. But there's not a lot of the, you don't get much trespassing in winter time, you don't get, you know, washouts that happen in spring, but you go out, it's easier to mitigate those things from a non-residential standpoint as opposed to having to have somebody on the site on those kind of higher elevational TPZ properties. And I think that's why when this, you know, I mean, the, this property and Edwards, next door to it, for years didn't have a caretaker on it. I mean, they had out agricultural buildings on them, but nobody living on it. And so, I mean, here Alan, I mean, he retires, moves onto the property, does all his, his own TSI work on the property and carrying out his forest management and property management and stuff. So we see that here at this too as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any other?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Alan Edwards. Everybody's been talking about me, so I figured I'd better, better get up and say my words. I own and manage the 520 acres of TPZ land that's north of this particular property. It's, the land's been under family forest management since 1946. I've owned it since 1976. My family and I moved onto the land in 1997. We actually got a conditional use for a caretaker's residence in 96 and convinced the county that, that we would be our own caretakers and also made a promise to the county that, at that time, that, that my principal occupation would be working that land, which it has been. The, I'm, I'm going to try to sort of address some of what I picked up as your concerns about, about the property. And, and I, you know, I have my opinion on the appeal, but I'll get to that in a minute. As far as the valid question that, that you were asking, Rich, about, well, why, if, if SPI has thousands of acres further up the hill that, that doesn't have caretaker residence, why does this need a caretaker residence? And I can't, I can't speak for them. I can only tell you what the value has been of us living on the land. I had, I had been commuting to the land. We lived in Davis and I'd been commuting on weekends and coming up part-time working prior to us moving there. And, and that was a horrible situation, but once we moved there, I was able to work the land essentially full-time. One of the very early advantages of that was I, I installed a shaded fuel break along the, the main crest of the ridge. We own a half a mile of the crest of the ridge. A fuel break that was about forty, or 400 feet wide and went for a half a mile. And that just coincidentally was where the Ponrosa fire came out of the canyon in 2001. And so CDF was able to use that fuel break to stop the fire. And they, at least from what they told me, they, they, there was a real chance that the fire would have burned on into Colfax. It certainly would have burned the rest of my land. And so, so I would not have been able to put that fuel break in just by commuting to the land. There was too much work involved. And I continue to work, I'm getting a little older, parts are wearing out, but I, I can work five or six hours a day in the field with a chainsaw. And so, so I work a thousand to 1,500 hours a year doing timber stand improvement work, piling and burning, controlling the fuels. To me, being able to live on the land and, and do sometimes just little bits of work every day is crucial. This afternoon, actually, we're getting closer to this afternoon, I thought, I thought I would be able to go back sooner, but I will be able to finish this season's slash burning, just be able to walk out and, and go do it. Very important to me. I've been involved in the county's deliberations on, on the Basquins Parker land for almost 10 years now. Very, very concerned and interested about what, what happens on that land since I'm a neighbor, since, since I know that, that real estate development can affect our land in a very adverse way. And in, in that whole 10 years, my, my moving principle has been to try to promote timber management and the forest resource and, and try, try to move things away from real estate development so that it, that it didn't just become another subdivision like all the rest of them on our western side. And things have moved. There have been real arguments for a long time, but things have really moved particularly over the last couple of years. And as you were told today, they, they have done significant work on that land in terms of forest management over the last three years. I mean, I'm not a party to it, I haven't seen it, I can hear the masticator up there working, I can see their crews going in and out. And 50,000 trees, there's a lot of trees to plant. Believe me, I've, I've done a lot of planting, and that's a lot. And, and they, they have done, I don't know how many acres of mastication they've done, but they've got to have done scores of acres, they've done hundreds of acres of mastication. And, and that's a process, it's going to take a long time, but it's, it's taking a piece of land that was really burned hot in the Ponrosa fire and trying to get it back into forest. That's crucial. So, so, you know, I think they deserve credit for that, 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 yes, at one point they wanted to subdivide the land and, and put in Taco Bell Grandes or whatever houses on it and, and move out, sell it and move out, but, but things seem to have turned around. And I think they deserve the credit for that. So they, they've demonstrated that, that desire to do the forest management, they have a forest management plan. They have done significant fire, fuel reduction work, which is benefits everybody in the area. There, yes, the, the appellants have some concerns, and I understand that. I've worked on other issues with them in the past. I just don't happen to agree with them on their, on their issues on this, this particular site. So the, the visual concerns that they have, the aesthetic concerns that they have, I understand those. But I got to tell you, when I, when I get up on top of my ridges and I look out over the land, I am in the view shed of a lot of houses in, in the Colfax area. And there are a lot of houses, in my timber management plan, I have to address visual impacts. So a lot of people want certain things out of my land for their aesthetic pleasure. When I look out, I'm looking back at their houses and their cars, and the cars that roar up and down, down the Yankee Jim's Road so that the rafters can get down to the river. They're not aesthetically pleasing to me. So there's two sides to this aesthetics. And I think maybe it's time that we all kind of back away and say, okay, maybe, maybe a lot of the aesthetics is, is just not our business. I don't think it's my business to tell somebody else what their house should look like and where it is, and I don't think it's theirs to tell me about mine. And so that's, that's my opinion. As far as the location of the house on the land, if you look at a topo map, well, you can look at that map, and, and one way to look at it is there, there actually is a lot of flat ground on that land, it's just not very much as horizontal. So there's not really a lot of places where you can build houses. You can try to cut them into hillsides, but the county has, county has code requirements on how steep, steep a, a hill you can put a house into. What is it, 40%? Something like that?
For something.
Well, whatever it is, it's, you, you've got limits. And so to say, well, you can, you can put houses anywhere on there, down in any ravine or, or in along the road, the access road coming in, is, is really kind of, kind of off-base. The access road coming in has slopes up to 80%. I mean, it's cut into a very steep, steep ravine. Part of it's rock, which doesn't percolate very well, percolate very well, and it's close to the creek. So if you tried to, if you tried to cut out a building site, you'd have a hell of a time keeping, keeping the, the fill from dumping into the creek, which would be a huge water quality problem. So going back to kind of my, my basic philosophy is, I, I don't feel like I, or even in this case, you guys, should be micromanaging where, where on the property the house should go. People are going to think about that themselves, and they're, they're maybe not going to put it in a great place in the long run, or maybe they are, but that's kind of up to them, that responsibility. I don't know, maybe I should stop for now. I, I, I think that the, through all these county deliberations, county staff has done, done a really good job this time of coming up with, with a way of handling this property that keeps it in timber management and does what TPZ was intended to do, which is, is promote the forest and promote the management. Whether it's a 1,200-foot house or 1,800-foot house, I don't want to get into that argument. And I don't know that it's, that it's all that, that valuable for us. A 4,000-foot house, then one would begin to wonder, well, what is really the purpose of this? Is it, is it to make the land more valuable to sell or not? But even an 1,800-foot house, that's, that's not a mini mansion. So I don't know that I would get into that. I think an important, an important thing going on, assuming that you decide something today, is, is the enforcement of, of the conditions of this permit. Making sure that, that timber management continues to be the activity on the ground. I don't know what the county's process is on doing that, but that's, that's really important. I have to say, no one's ever asked us if we continue to, to do timber management, maybe because I'm fairly active in the community, people know that, but, and we have, I mean, I spend, I have spent thousands of hours doing it since, since we got our, our permit. So checking once, once in a while to make sure that happens is important. But I recommend that you deny the appeal and confirm the, the decision of the zoning administrator and, and let everyone get on with life. I'm happy to ask your questions.
Yeah, can, just, just one quick question. How big is your house?
Our house is about 2,000. I don't remember the exact number. And, and so it's a little bigger than, than what the maximum is that you're allowing them. I would, I would caveat that, ask you to keep in mind, first of all, we, we applied for and received that 18 years ago, under a, under a whole different set of regulations. If, if, if the requirements had been 1,800 feet, we would have done 1,800 feet. If they'd been 1,200 feet, we have two kids, we would have done 1,200 feet, because it was really important for us to live there. I might have asked for more than 1,200 feet. We're, we're maybe a little unique because, because we're not just a caretaker. We're, we're the owner caretakers. So, so we weren't, it's kind of a different situation. It wasn't just some cottage for a retired person to live in and watch the land. I am a working farmer, and I always, and I have been since we moved there, and I was part-time before then. And we had 40 years of history of intensive forest management up until then. So nobody, nobody was questioning whether, what, what our intentions were. So, but, but at that point, there was no limit. And so we built what we built. Now, I'm not, you know, I think you have good reasons for, for putting a limit on and making sure that it's not, you know, it doesn't, that the, that the purpose of a house isn't, isn't just for encouraging timber management, that there's some other purpose, purpose. And you all have, or several of you had questions along that line. But, so, you know, 1,200 feet, 1,800 feet, I'll, I'll leave you guys to argue that. Ours is a little bigger than that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay.
Okay, sir. Anybody else in the public that would like to speak?
My name's Gay Wiseman, and I just got involved in this project to help provide some image support for the appellant. But what I wanted to say is that as I took a couple of opportunities to try to view Camel Hump from various locations, I was very, just pleased in general to see that the region has held its look. It, it doesn't sprout the ridge top houses of so many less appealing parts of our canyon rim. And it's wonderful to see that still like that. And I'm very much in favor of your efforts to protect our view shed forever, because every time one new home goes up, it's just these little teeny incremental things, every little decision, it's just a small decision, but the aggregate of that is the loss of the wonderful resource we are trying to protect here, the wildlands of our canyon. We're responsible for that. I also want to just throw in one little voice in support of the wildlife that are resident already in this area. And every new home creates a pushback for wildlife yet again. We've got this ridge that is prone to, the fire history shows, this is going to burn over time, this is going to happen, those steep slopes we cannot change. Let's let the animals have that. They forage really well on steep rugged terrain. They forest really well and, or forage really well in, in timber protection zones. They don't do very well butting up against human residences. I've been living in that zone for over 30 years, and I know how hard it is to keep a détente with the wildlife that's, that works for every living being in the region. Thank you for letting me speak.
I know, Michael, did you want to respond? I was going to give you three minutes to respond if you had anything else to...
The, the reason, the three lot, three lot parcel map that was approved in 2005, the reason it hasn't been built or filed is because of the road cost. I've heard the estimate's somewhere between half a million and a million dollars, maybe 750,000 of the cost to implement that. And like I said at the first, that kind of cost indicates, is just one sign of all the huge problems with developing this property even for a caretaker. The, the, the property was purchased for about $300,000, and it's been offered for sale by different people for two and a half million, one point some odd million. This, this is land that they, according to letters from one of the set of landowners and from a Realtor, had put this on the advertisement of the property, taxes are 750, $800 a year, using that as a selling point. So that is the, the basis of the, anyway. The, this property does have another condition it has to make, they, they have to get an assessment from the Department of Toxic Substance Control, that is a very good condition in this, to get clearance with that by the staff. The 1,200 feet, 1,200 square foot is a, a very good idea, very consistent, I think, with, with, we would say with what you're doing. The critical thing is, is the location on the, the site and so forth. I, I do call your attention, we, we've submitted the, the unit chief, Brad Harris's letter, you should, should all have that, where he points out that putting structures, and they do not support putting structures in this kind of an area. They can be mitigated, but they don't, they don't support it. It is a significant problem from the point of view of its impact on forestry, safety, fire safety. This is, this is you, this, this is not an area to put, put a house because of fire prevention, of fire safety issues. And I, I have, I had, during my pre-forestry and forestry school during those years, I fought on four fires, Forest Service fires, National Forest fires, the one I was a supply and then doing camp work, but, and then 20 years later, in, in New York, I was a volunteer fireman and I fought on forest structural fires. So I have, that is what has helped me get into understanding and studying the wildland urban interface, which is an issue that we will be pursuing in, all over Slano County till the cows come home. There, there really needs to be a change in not allowing development that creates fire traps and fire hazards. It's about time, certainly defensible face, space is important, and doing, doing everything you can to take into account the ignition zone, but the best way to stop fire hazards in the extreme fires hazard area is to design subdivisions or change their location or reduce lots and not even have there. And this is, this is the critical issue when it comes to what Brad Harris does mention, one structure. They have the same concerns about one structure as they do about more than one structure. And so please look at that letter and the, the Blonsky pages we have from that book that recommends factors you take into, should take into account when, where, deciding where to locate a home on a property. It hasn't been done here. That option of, of the Smothers Valley, I urge you to be sure that that is considered before this is resolved.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. With that, I'll close it off and bring it back to the commission for discussion.
My view, I mean, this has gone on for a very long time, and I believe that the county has done a, a very thorough and exhaustive study on this. And while I believe the appellant has brought up some concerns, I don't believe that it raises to the level of turning down this project. The only thing that I have a concern about is that, you know, leaving it as minimal amount of an impact as we can on the, the visual part of the property. I understand the reason for the location because of obviously grade issues and obviously visibility to manage the property effectively. So I don't have an issue with the site locations that they're talking about based on the information they provided. What I'm concerned about is not so much the square footage, I'm certainly supportive of the 1,800 square foot that the staff has recommended. I have an issue with the concern about the height. Now, they said the limitation is 25 feet. I think that it should just be a one-story structure, we're only talking about 1,800 square feet. I don't see how you could justify really 1,800 square feet on a two-story structure. So I, I would, my preference would be, as a suggestion, that we limit it to a one-story structure.
Probably would.
Yeah.
It'd be difficult to do two-story.
Right.
Okay. Rich, do you have any?
Okay, yeah, I had some real concerns when we came into this, but when I saw the map that shows, the implementation map, that was really kind of the critical turning point for me. If we would have just had this decision without that, I would, you know, the, the management plan is a broad management plan, but the implementation map does answer for me that there's been a lot of work that's gone on and that the owners of this property really have taken to heart to practice forestry on the property. So I appreciate that. And then also, you know, I can, because of the location of this property and the location next to a, a lot denser area, and the fact that this is in a very fire-prone area, you know, I think it's important that it be managed for forest, and I can see the need for the caretakers out to keep up with the management. I guess at this point, you know, even though I did have questions, because if they were going to do it today, if they were going to apply today, they would be limited to 1,200 square feet at this point, I'm not really having a problem with the 1,800 square feet. So I would support going forward with the project, denying the appeal.
Yeah, my main question, along with all the other concerns, I didn't think they come up to the level to, to overturn the, our plan department's decision, but was the issue between a residence and a caretaker's unit? I think the last gentleman, I'm sorry, I didn't, wasn't paying attention, I didn't catch your name, but that already lives on the property, on adjacent property, and, and one of my questions to the, to the applicant was going to be, well, what does, you have a job description for a caretaker? And I believe that other gentleman's already doing the job on his property answered those questions for me, because it is critical that you have culverts, you have this, you have that, plus I believe all the trees that were already planted indicate that it is already going to be developed or continue to be managed as a forest. So I'm happy with the 1,800 square feet, although I think, although we, we may not have a way to limit the height, I still think one story would be an additional condition I would support, the one that Wayne recommended. Other than that, I would deny the, vote to deny the appeal.
Quick comments, I think I'm in agreement with, with what's been said already. I don't think 600 feet one way or another on the sides of the house is going to affect any impact it has. So I have no issues with that. My experience with wildland firefighting is, is, I've been on quite a few. It all burns uphill, downhill, bottom of canyons, top of canyons, fire goes where it wants to go and where there's fuel to burn. It burns faster uphill, there's no doubt about that, and it's harder to get to. But as far as, it, it all burns sooner or later. When it, when, when it's, once it's lit, it goes.
Well, one quick, one thing that really made a difference for me is, is when the statement was made that he did a fire clearing and it's helped stop the fire. I mean, to me, it makes it worthwhile to have somebody there and, and have it managed versus unmanaged or, or half managed where a fire, you know, could get into Colfax.
Early air detection and everything else.
Yeah.
Somebody on site, so.
Mickey, you have any?
Well, I can see the pros and cons on both sides, and I agree with the county making the caretaker units smaller now even than they were to avoid any, you know, semblance of development for other reason. They did apply under the 1,800, so I can, I can accept that. The view thing is, is questionable. If you're on top, you can see the fire. If you're in the bottom, if you start the fire, it goes up faster, so there's, you know, kind of an even trade there. So I'm, I'm inclined to go along with staff on this one.
I, I can go ahead and make a motion if you'd like me to do that unless there's more questions.
Okay, because everybody sort of made my comments, so.
Yeah. Do you want to say something?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion based on the four points that the staff has recommended on page 11. Would be, number one, would be to deny the third-party appeal filed by the Friends of the North Fork. Number two would be adopt the mitigated negative declaration, which is in Attachment G, and mitigation monitoring program, which is Attachment H, that has been prepared for the project and has been finalized pursuant to CEQA. It has been prepared for the project and has been finalized pursuant to CEQA, CEQA. And, uh, number three, uphold the zoning administrator's decision to approve a minor use permit to allow further construction of an eighteen hundred square foot caretaker's residence with an attached or detached twenty-five by twenty-five square foot garage on one of two building sites. Number four, excuse me, approve the zoning administrator's, uh, approved conditions of approval, which is an attachment E, as modified in attachment F. And, uh, I would throw out just one, uh, just caveat, and I believe Jeff is correct, it would be difficult to probably do a two-story structure at twenty-five feet, but I would like to, okay, all right, since we have a contractor out here, it's, uh, I would like to throw out the idea of adding that to just be a one-story structure.
So you're making that part of...
No, I would make that as a part of that. So I'll leave that to the rest. Okay.
We're gonna find CEQA findings.
Uh, yeah.
CEQA.
CEQA, is there, uh, that was in two.
Yeah, that should be part of the motion.
Just the findings effect on...
Is, is there some addition? Oh, and the CEQA, is that part of that as well?
Yeah.
So as all...
And the minor use permit.
There, there, is it just, just stating the findings of CEQA and approving of those?
As part of the motion.
As part of the motion, yeah.
Yeah, minor use permit finding.
Okay.
Okay, and your second, I'm sure includes that.
Right.
And just clarification, so addition of a, um, condition that it be one-story.
Approve, zoning administrator's approved conditions of approval, attachment E, as modified, attachment F, as further modifying condition number one to, um, state...
Says it. And I'll jump in here. Number one says approve this minor use permit that allows for the construction of a eighteen hundred square foot caretaker's residence and then add single story and a twenty-five by twenty-five attached or detached garage.
I think that's what Wayne said.
That's correct. That would be correct. And point three, yes. Wouldn't we have a second?
We have a point of discussion if we're concerned about the footprint the house is leaving. Two stories leaves a smaller footprint.
It does.
And if you have your attached garage down below and the house up above, you've disturbed much less dirt and, and hilltop and whatever than you have spreading it out on a single story.
I, that's a, that's a valid point, Jeff.
Also valid is the fact that one story is far less visible.
That, and that's really the motivation, right.
With defensive space around it anyway, so.
I think before we change the motion, though, we can have to vote on it.
Yeah. That was just, well, just a discussion point. No. Okay, with that, call for roll call vote.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Rucucci?
Yes.
Mr. Denial?
Yes.
So motion carries, if anybody should, um, appeal this, the appeal fee is five hundred thirty-six dollars and you have ten calendar days to appeal.
Mr. Chair, before you adjourn, there was an exhibit that the applicant provided the commission. I wanna make sure it gets to the clerk and in the record.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, I already had snagged that, thank you for reminding me to vote. The next time I'll wish to remember.
Okay, and with that, thank you all for, for coming and we'll go ahead and close the commission meeting. Thank you.